...2019 meeting of the Edina City Council calling this meeting to order. Mayor Hovland is traveling this week. He is in Washington, D.C. at the Regional Council of Mayors Meeting, and not regional, the U.S. Conference of Mayors Meeting. And so I am Acting Mayor in his place this week, or this month. So, all right. So, roll call, please. Clerk Ellison.
Councilmember Fisher.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Hovland. Acting Mayor Brindle.
Here. All right. Thank you. We have an agenda in front of us. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are none.
Okay. Then I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Community comment. We'll go right to community comment if anyone would like to come forward and address the council. You have three minutes to do so, and you can, unless you have something to show us, you can go to a podium on either side. If you have something to show us, there is a table in the center. Mr. Frankel, welcome.
Hi. David Frankel. Forgot to give my address. I did send an email to all the council people what I'm going to talk about, the Park and Rec meeting from January 8th, 2019. There were eight comments made in that meeting I didn't particularly appreciate. It was a personal attack from the venue of a Park and Rec Commission, which is an official city of Edina venue. And in case you didn't get a chance to listen to it, I'll play it for you at the microphone here. If I can pull it up.
It's a blow-up of David Frankel.
It's a blow-up of David Frankel. That is me. To have the audacity to make that comment, I have no idea the context of the comment. I've never met this woman before, and she makes a comment about me, and evidently everybody in Park and Rec knew the context, knew the behind-the-scenes discussion of me, made a comment about me, and then laughed about it, including the former Park and Rec Director. I don't know what the issue was, but if people do not have the thick enough skin to take criticism of the city and attack the people personally who make those attacks, they should not be on any city organized committee or be an elected official. I have pretty thick skin, but I have a family. How do you explain to your family a comment like that? I don't even know the context, as I mentioned. This woman should not be on the Park and Rec Committee. And I'm demanding she get either removed, or she resign. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel. Anyone else?
Martha Moffett, 4929 Maple Road. City council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak briefly about the 50th and France Small Plan that directly affects our property. My husband and I live on the north side of Maple Road, and so we've been following with great interest the planning commission's plans as they go forward for the, particularly the U.S. Bank parking lot. We're concerned because we feel that there was not sufficient attempt made to consult with Maple Road residents, 49th Street residents, and Towns Road residents, the people whose properties will be directly affected by these plans as they go forward. We would like, we're very grateful, I should say, to have met with Councilmember Kevin Staunton, who was tremendously open and compassionate and willing to listen to our concerns. We would love to have an interaction with the Planning Commission itself to make sure that our concerns are taken into consideration as these plans move forward. It is a prime property that's going to be developed, and it seems as though wonderful architects, forward-looking thinking blends the old with the new in a way that enhances the value of all properties. For example, the Louvre in France with the imp, whatever that was, entrance, the old and the new architecture work together in a way that everybody loves and enhances the beauty of both. So we would love any plans made for the development of this property to respect the value of the homes on Maple Road and the Towns Road and 49th Street, instead of decreasing the value or cutting off the light, for example. So we're concerned about buildings that would be so high that they might cut off the light to our, the sunlight to the streets and yards where our children's play. We're concerned about parking issues if sufficient capacity is not made for every car that comes to visit this new development, both for business reasons and perhaps because of residents. There needs to be, we would ask that there be sufficient parking made available within the new development so that the parking doesn't spill over onto our residential streets and forever change the character of our streets. We're also concerned about congestion. And notice, we've seen a copy of the 1975 plan for that same area of 50th and France, and the city fathers, and they probably were all fathers at that point, had some of their guiding principles to relieve congestion and to preserve the residential areas. So we would ask that those same principles be guiding principles for the planning going forward. We very much want to partner with the city and with the developers, and we feel that the business interests, the homeowners' interests, everybody's interests can work together. In a, a great city, always, everybody's working together in a way to have things move forward to be a blessing and benefit to everyone. And we're confident that with this spirit of cooperation, that the same can be achieved here and enhance the value of Edina for generations to come. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Martha.
My name is Dana Deutsch, 4921 Maple Road, two doors down from Martha. I also want to echo all of the from-the-heart comments that she has made. We really care about the community and the future development. When it came to all of our attention that plans were underway and we started seeing design concepts on the city website, confusion and concern bubbled up immediately. Many, many of us were in the dark. Specifically tonight, I wanted to respond to the planning memo that was distributed two weeks ago by the Commissioner co-chairs of the 50th and France Small Area Plan, Ian Nemiroff and John Hamilton. We appreciated that communication. It settled us down for a little bit. And as White Oaks and South White Oaks addition residents, we ask for more openness with our neighborhoods, especially these neighborhoods most immediately affected by the ongoing planning for the community. With regard to that memo, because the third community meeting reviewed unapproved concepts due to errors in communication, that's a quote, "We would like to respectfully request another well-publicized community meeting to review the approved concepts, which none of us have seen," and now this is two weeks later, reflecting changes that were made in that memo, including an opportunity for public comment and response. The, quote, "Completion of the 50th and France Small Area Plan is still in process per this memo. It hasn't come to the council yet." So we think it's a reasonable request, given the described communication errors that occurred, which in turn have stirred, upset, confusion, and concern. Finally, regarding reference to the buffer in this menu, in this memo, the words are not as absolute as directives spelled out for removing the road and the walking path at the expense of a home from the drawings. Rather, regarding the buffer, it reads, "The existing buffer, which is a protected easement around the U.S. Bank site, are intended to remain." We hope this is an absolute and not an intention. We care about it. It does give us a respectable buffer, providing some quiet peace and line between long-established residential homes and the commercial area right beyond the buffer. I also wanted to say, I'm the one who organized, authored, and submitted the poll of petition regarding protecting that buffer and bringing to the attention of everyone the legalities behind it and the perpetual nature of this easement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana.
Frank Lorenz, 701-511-York Avenue, South, Edina. At the beginning of every meeting that's held in this room, the lady to my right, who's your communications director, makes a general comment, and that includes an admonition to people that if they leave the room during the meeting, that they don't speak loudly outside the door because their voices carry back in here because there's nothing but a single sheet of glass to form the wall. I guess I've heard that statement from her for six-plus years now, for however many meetings you have per year, more than 45 generally. One wonders if you might consider issuing an RFP, a request for proposal, to an architectural firm to see if they could do something about that. I'm a metallurgical engineer, not an architect, and I'm, Mr. Milner, who is not here tonight, might be better equipped to handle this. But in any event, inadvertently, the design of this building has created an echo chamber outside the door of this room. You have hard surfaces, glass, the tile floor, the wall of the section of the building across there where the police department is housed. And so when people speak outside, even if they're speaking in normal tones, the hard surfaces out there amplify their voices. Now, there are mechanisms, sound-absorbing mechanisms, waffle tiles, whatever, that are quite sophisticated. They're used in music halls, Orchestra Hall has them, the Guthrie has them. It's not rocket science. Now, I don't think you should spend $100,000 on this problem, but it'd be interesting to find out if by spending $10,000 or $15,000, you might be able to knock the noise down quite a bit. Because most people that attend these meetings read, write, and speak English, so they understand what the lady has said. But in a contentious meeting that goes on for several hours, one side loses a point, and when that matter is fully discussed and decided, they normally get up and leave, and when they get out the door, they want to talk to their friends. So this is an ongoing problem, but like a roof that leaks, if you never fix it, the roof will continue to leak. You've got a sound problem because of the wall there, and it might be interesting to see if there's any inexpensive technology you can apply to do something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenz. Anyone else?
I'm Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue, in Edina. I sent an email that didn't quite get directly routed to people on the council, and I also sent this information to, and I got my tech issues figured out, sent it to the Planning Commission members, and also to the Energy and Environment Commission, because I think this, what I have to say is relevant to what they look at. As developers in Edina press for more height in buildings, both residential and commercial, and I mean multi-unit residential, and as utilization of solar power becomes more necessary regarding climate change, solutions to this issue are sought. I'm going to throw out an idea for solving this problem. That may seem a bit radical at first, but it makes quite a bit of sense. So, here goes. And I really wish I could be talking to a lot of architects about this. A sunlight setback requirement. What that would be is to require that all new buildings, starting with the second floor and going up, must step back a certain distance on all sides so as to never cast a shadow across its property boundary at ground level between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. in any given season of the year. That's it. Simple. Builders would most likely roll their eyes at this prospect, and many architects too. But this could be an intriguing challenge for others. A bit of astronomy and math will give the needed step-back requirements. The sunlight setback requirement would erase all objections from neighbors to having a lack of sun in our long winters, like right now, affecting their mental health and property values. This would encourage solar panel installation, reducing carbon emissions. It would allow better sunlight conditions for more trees and greenery to be planted around buildings to help cool and clean the air. Every floor can have a lovely walkout deck with more plantings and gardens on them. That top-floor penthouse or office suite would bring top dollar. It would simply make a lot of people a lot happier. And a wild idea? Maybe not. And you would all get a lot more sleep because you wouldn't have meetings going past midnight so often when this issue comes up. So, just something to think about. I want to throw it out there. Planning Department, a couple people in there got it too. So, I just want to plant this seed and see if it goes anywhere. And what I imagine is an architecture that would be more like you're building a hill that people live and work in. So maybe we'll become a bunch of hills instead of big columns going up. It would be a drastic change in architecture, but to help keep the earth a little healthier in the future, and Edina a bit cooler, this isn't a bad idea. So, give it some thought. Thank you.
Thanks, Janie. All right. Anyone else? Thank you for your comments. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a series of items that we can act on in a single motion. Anyone want to take an item off the Consent Agenda tonight?
Yes. I asked that we remove item 5E.
All right. Item 5E, take off the Consent Agenda, which is, it regards a stoplight, engineering services to design a stoplight at the corner of Wooddale and Valley View. Anything else? All right. Then I need a motion to move the remainder of the Consent Agenda, which is another, what, seven items?
So moved. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you. And Kevin, Member Staunton, item E.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. I didn't really, I don't have an objection to this issue. I wanted to bring it off just to highlight another positive result from our small-area planning process. We did a small-area plan for the Valley View-Wooddale area, probably 2016, I think we adopted it. And part of that small-area plan encouraged study of the traffic in that area, and engineering staff actually did a study that considered closing one of the streets, determined that that was not the right answer, didn't really produce the right effect, and now has zeroed in on a semaphore at Wooddale and Valley View. So, I just think it's a good example of how, when you do long-range planning, sometimes it takes a while, but we get to a solution that I think will be good for that neighborhood and help move traffic through there in an efficient way. And so I just wanted to give staff and the folks who participated in that small-area planning process kudos for more good results coming from our kind of resident-led planning process. So with that, I would move approval of that item.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well...
Madam Acting Mayor, can I note that we had an item prior to this, the city manager's response to community comments that we maybe inadvertently skipped over?
Yes.
And I wanted to piggyback on that because a couple of the comments that happened here as well.
I apologize.
No, and, thank you, Your Honor. And the reason, perhaps, that we skipped that is that, as the Acting Mayor and I met this afternoon, and I really don't have any response, because last time, we had four speakers, three speakers who spoke, excuse me, we had five speakers. We had three speakers who spoke on the Maple Road, really the 50th and France Small Area Planning Process, and Director Teague was here that night and was able to answer a couple of their questions. So we addressed their questions at that time. And there was this other question about, should we have an additional public meeting to have a, to give one more opportunity to look at the bona fide plan? So that's still under discussion, as I understand it. Alice Holbert had thanked the mayor for doing walk with the mayor, and so that was a comment. And Mr. Lorenz had kind of continued questions from a previous council meeting about fire engine replacement, and I had prepared a response for that night, and I gave that response that night. So there weren't any other outstanding questions that night.
So if I may just piggyback on the 50th and France stuff, because I think I had asked in response to that for some information about what efforts we made to notify and reach out to the community as part of that whole process. And I'm glad that there hasn't been an elaborate response to that, because frankly, I, you know, given the comments from, I think Mr. Shand and Ms. Deutsch were here last time, and Ms. Moffett and Ms. Deutsch tonight, I don't think it really matters. I mean, I think the point at this stage is really to meet good news. We have the attention of the neighborhood now, and we're not done with the planning process. And so I want to thank Ms. Moffett and Ms. Deutsch for meeting with me. I also had a chance to visit with Mr. Shand. And what is the good news on this is we've had folks emerge in the neighborhood, Brian Lambert, Cheryl Appeldorn, who have kind of collected a lot of contact information, and there's, there's a good communication string going now. So I have spent some time talking with the co-chairs of the group, just to encourage them to reach out and connect with those folks in the neighborhood, especially the five that I mentioned, five or six that I mentioned, because they've got a good conduit to others in the neighborhood. Just to talk about what, you know, what we might do between here and the conclusion of the process to make sure we're hearing what everybody has to say and making sure that we incorporate that into any final plans that we have. And while I want to say that the folks who are on the working group, and remember, they're all residents as well. This is a resident-led group that has put a lot of volunteer hours into this, and I can understand where they may want to get to the finish line. But I think if we figure out some ways to make sure we're incorporating this input from folks who are really very nearby this area, I think we'll have an even better product that'll be even more durable. So I know Ian and John, who are co-chairing that, are working on connecting with the neighbors, and I just encourage staff to be supportive of whatever they need in terms of making sure that we're facilitating that continued conversation.
We will be.
All right. Thank you.
Could I just add one more comment to that?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I just, I would concur, and I am glad you were able to meet with folks. To me, you know, finding a way, and regardless what's happened up to this point, clearly some people have been missed somehow in the process, and having those conversations now, so when it comes to us, and that's the hard part, when you get all these emails, you realize, well, there's a dust-up out there, but it's, you know, it's over here, and we're dealing with all of our current dust-ups here. And you feel like, well, that's coming to us in the future, but you hope that the communication happens, and the conversations, and the planning gets done in a way, when it comes to us, everyone's on the same page, to the extent you can in a planning process like this. So that's the goal, to whatever extent we need to make that happen.
All right. Thank you. All right. The, let's see, we've got special recognitions and presentations, and we have none tonight. Public hearings, we have no public hearings tonight. Reports and recommendations, we don't have any of those tonight. And so correspondence, petitions, anything other than what we have on the dais tonight?
No.
All right. Let's see, advisory communication, we don't have one tonight. Aviation noise update. I can share that I attended the January meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee at the airport, at Metropolitan Airport Commission, and there was a variety of reports, as usual, including nighttime flights, and just talking about what types of flights, how many, what types of aircraft are involved in those night flights that came, some of them, particularly the wide-body jets, can tend to create some noise. And so, so we looked at that, and all the reports that are presented to the Noise Oversight Committee are available online. You go to macnoise.com, and you'll have a series of tabs. One of those says "Reports," and all of the reports that the committee receives are available. So you can see, everything that we learn is on the site, if you're interested. We are hearing from one particular resident about early morning flights that he's concerned about, so we have scheduled a meeting with two people from the MAC and myself to meet with him on January 29th, which we will do. All right. Anything else aviation-wise?
Not for me.
All right. We're looking forward to, we, as a council, are traveling to Washington, D.C. for the National League of Cities Conference, which is an annual conference, and at that conference, the NOISE, N-O-I-S-E, it's actually an acronym, but Lockridge, Brindle, and now a law firm puts staff in a leadership position of the NOISE advocacy group, and so we are part of that group, and talking with other cities that are dealing with airport noise in their areas. We're relatively unique in that our airport is smack dab in the middle of a residential area, and so consequently, we are active, are a very active member of that NOISE group, as well as other advocacy groups that can keep us attuned to what our residents are experiencing. And then, how to bring that to the attention of the MAC and the FAA. All right. So, let's see. Then we go on to mayor and council comments. Let's start with Member Fisher tonight.
No comments tonight.
Kevin?
Nothing from me.
Oh. Member Anderson?
Just that Hockey Day in Minnesota was participated in on the highest possible level at Braemar over the weekend. My four players were evident and had a great time. I saw that the place was booming, and really, everybody that you ever knew in the city, you can run into at Braemar on Saturday or Sunday.
That's cool. I have a couple things. One piece of information that was shared at the, at the Noise Oversight Committee meeting is that the final four will be here in early April. So the big college NCAA tournament will be here. And we hear about it from the standpoint of how many more flights will be coming in, when will those flights come in, what kind of aircraft they will be, and how widespread is the area where those aircraft are going to park for a few days. And so, MSP Airport will park a number of, a number of jets, as well as the reliever airports. A reliever airport, that's, we have a lot of them in Minnesota, which is really nice. One of them, close by, is the Flying Cloud Airport in Eden Prairie, so they'll park some jets as well. So you'll see some increased activity beginning in about the end of March. The final day of the tournament, the big game, is April 8th, so everybody will go out either that, that day late, or April 9th. And so it'll be about 10 days of, 10 days of maybe in- And so it'll be about 10 days of, 10 days of maybe increased activity that's outside the norm. And then I attended the, the meeting of the Southwest Corridor Light Rail Community Work Steering Committee. It's a committee the mayor sits on, and I am his alternate, so I attended in his place last Thursday. And we are excited that Southwest Corridor Light Rail has a green light, if you will, and the Green Line Extension, which it will be, is moving forward. The government shutdown is affecting it, because the FDA, the Federal Transportation Administration, is an active partner in this. And so any, any work that they are responsible for isn't being done right now, but there's plenty of work to be done. And so this particular committee, there's lots of committees on this light rail line, this particular committee is station area planning. And so we listened to the various cities along the line, St. Louis Park, Hopkins, Minnetoka, Eden Prairie, about the development, residential and commercial development that is being spurred already by being along that line. So it was a great meeting, and we talked a lot about housing and the different kinds of commercial development that, that are coming. So that's what I have. And Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. First of all, at your, we're going to do our biennial council photo, a council photo of all five of you as a group, but also the five of you as individuals, next, at our next council meeting, February 5th. We're going to do your individual shots, your headshots before the work session, so as you come in, we'll have something set up here, and we'll get those shots beforehand. And then as a group, right before the council meeting, so probably right, I think right in the well here, right? And so, right, so we can catch the flags, and we'll do that as quickly as we can. But that's typically where we do that shot. So I just want to give you plenty of time to plan for that, on February 5th. Something else on your calendar, January 31st is your next HRA meeting, and it's going to be a big meeting that day. Couple of items that stand out on that particular agenda is, we have, you've received a lot of communication, and they've been waiting their turn in the queue, is the Village Homes Homeowners Association has an issue regarding their Centennial Lakes Maintenance Fees, that they've been waiting to bring to the HRA. They wish to be relieved of those fees in the future. Staff have an alternative point of view, but they want a shot to give their explanation about why. And so this is going to be their opportunity to do that. And so they're first on the agenda that day. But another item on the agenda that day that we do need to do some additional preparation of you for is that the Housing Foundation is going to seek your support, in specifically your fiscal support, of their proposal to redevelop the Waldorf Nevin site. They're in a grant cycle application period where they're going to need to present their proposal to you that day and get some kind of action, or a non-action is a non-action, I guess, in this case. But if they're, if the HRA is in a mode to support it, you would need to express that preference that day, so that they can make their grant application date, which is, I think, just the next week after that. They are going to be submitting a compliant development plan for that site, that will comply with the new small area plan. And your support, your fiscal support, or your support in general, can be conditioned on regulatory approval down the line. So that, that part of it needs to be discussed by the HRA and worked out. But I just want you to know that that's going to be a decision that they're going to be looking for from you that day. We have had discussion off and on over the years about how we do our selection of board and commission members. We normally have 20-plus candidates for 10 or 12 openings. This year, we don't have, know how many, how many candidates we have, because the, it hasn't closed yet, the vacancy period does, extends until January 31st. But we have only four openings this year. Just, it just happens to be that's the way that the vacancies fell, we had some people re-up, a lot more people...
Four, or, four or five?
Uh, I think it's four.
I thought you said five.
Did I say five before?
Yeah, you said five earlier, that's why I asked.
It, it's four or five.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay.
I'll pin it down for sure. But, but in any event, it's, it's a lot less than we've had before. And so if, if there is a mind, or if there's, if there's a sense from the council that you'd like to change the way that we do our selection process, which historically has been all of you interviewing every candidate for, that walks through the door, this might be the year to do that, since we only have a small number of vacancies. We don't, we have, we don't really share much with candidates about how we're going to select, who gets onto the boards and commissions, we just tell them about the assignment itself. So we haven't talked about this before, is there some interest in having that discussion, or is it something you want to tee up for next year? How do you feel about it? If we're going to, if we're going to do it, we should talk about it fairly soon, because we need to get, we need to begin the process of scheduling interviews fairly quickly, because we're normally doing this, that, kind of that first week of February, because you're making some decisions in February, and then making appointments in March.
Member Fisher?
It might be helpful, you know, I've got two years of context, well, I guess a little bit more from when I was Chair of the Planning Commission way back. But like, how long have we been doing it this way, and what is this way? And I don't know, maybe Councilmember Anderson knows that, but it might be helpful to...
In my context, I started here in November of 2010, and in, so in spring of 2011, this is how it was presented to me, how we do it here. So I, and Councilmember Grindel, you, you predate me, so...
Yeah, this, a practice of the entire council, being present at the interviews, began when Member Bennett, Joni Bennett was a member of this body. And so that's, you know, that, is that already approaching 10 years ago? So, that's, that, and before that, it was really, really the mayor, and maybe one council But it certainly, you know, we can, we can talk about it. Manager Neil and I talked about it briefly today, and it could be a quorum of the council, three of us. But, or even just two of us, for that matter, but, but I think, I think three of us would make it nice, because then it gets publicly noticed, and, and I think that's good.
I'm kind of curious about the spread on vacancies that are available. I know that the HPC is significant, but I don't know how many openings there are in that.
Two.
Two. And then, what else?
There's two on HPC, one on, I think, Human Rights and Relations.
One.
And...
I've got it, Scott, can I just...
Do you have it, Ruthie? Okay. So there's one on heritage preservation, or, excuse me, two on heritage preservation, one on arts and culture, and one on human rights and relations.
Okay.
Four total.
In the past, occasionally, there had been, there've been more openings.
Yes.
But my recollection is that occasionally, there'll be qualified candidates coming forth that may be seeking one commission, one board, who might be asked to serve on a different board.
Right.
It's come up.
Yep.
With the small number of positions available, when we look at redoing or rethinking the interview process, those, that small number of vacancies, how does that affect that? Is that, is that part of your thinking about reworking it?
No. No, how, my thoughts about reworking it were really how, how many of the council would be involved in the interview process. What we've done in the past, at least in the eight years I've been here, is, the entire council has been involved in interviewing every candidate. Occasionally, a member wouldn't be there for a night. We've typically done this over two or three nights, usually. So not, maybe not everybody is there for every hour of it, but almost every, but almost all five electeds were there for every hour, every, every person. And so there was just, there, we've, we've talked about whether that is the best use of all of your time to do that or not.
Sure.
And so that's, that's where this is coming from. And it perhaps is just a little too close to the interviewing time to change it up at this point. Maybe we need a little more time to talk about if we're going to make a fundamental change in doing it. But I at least wanted to raise it to see how you felt about it.
Just on that topic in general, just with the small number of vacancies, and we don't know how many applicants.
Not yet, because there's still a week or so for people to open up.
So evaluating the qualifications of the candidates becomes that much more focused, I think, in this year, as opposed to maybe some other years where...
We've had a practice of interviewing all comers.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Yeah. Just a thought. Thank you.
All right. Member Fisher?
I mean, one other thing to look at, I mean, there's one thing to look at, you know, the time involved and everything. I mean, I think every time we do it, we say, wow, that was amazing, you know, it was a pretty good experience to see the quality of people, you know, again and again. I don't know why it surprises us, but the quality is always so incredible. I always think about it from the perspective of the person walking into that room, though. It's a long table, and they're at the middle of the table, and the entire table, and even the ends sometimes, is filled with city council, you know, chairs and commissions, staff. I mean, you'd think you're, you know, being nominated for a high court position, and you have to, you know, work your way through that process or something, so it's...
In 10 minutes.
Yeah, in 10 minutes. It's, I always look at their eyes when they walk in, and it's sort of that, not quite expecting an entire room full of people to be interviewed. So that's another thing I think we should consider, is that, you know, does that feel right?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I share what Councilmember Fisher said in terms of, I'm always just blown away by the quality of people who are willing, and the generosity of people who are willing to give their time to their community. But at the same time, I always feel really bad about the people we are, who are volunteering, and we're saying, no thanks.
Yeah.
And it just, and after a 10-minute interview in an awkward kind of setting. So I'm not sure what a better system is. One, and it may be that we can't pivot this quickly to make a change for this year, but one suggestion I'd have is, maybe we ask the people who've interviewed in past years what they think about the process. And is, you know, do they think there's a better way to do it? Are they, do they go away with a bad taste in their mouth? I mean, the last thing I want to do is send anybody away with the feeling like this was a bad experience. I want them to go away feeling like, you know, we really appreciated their willingness to volunteer, and hopefully they'll try another way to engage. So...
I mean, that is the kind of feedback we get, when we get feedback from applicants, is they're, they're shocked that they're meeting with the entire city council.
Okay.
Right. That's, they think they're coming in to meet with a couple of staff people and maybe an elected, so when they meet all five council members there, they're pretty surprised.
Do they like it?
Yeah, yeah.
Do they?
They're just surprised that, that...
And it may be that we let them know that that's what they're going to encounter before they come in.
Yeah.
But if that's, you know, if we're getting generally positive feedback, I'd encourage us to get some more. I just, it just feels like there's some way we can do it better. And maybe it's just that I feel bad that we don't have a spot for everybody when we get these great volunteers.
All right.
Okay, absent a clear direction to change, we're going to keep, we're going to keep status quo in place then for this year, I think.
Okay.
Because we're pretty close to being able to schedule...
You know, we might, because Members, or, former Councilmember Stewart, really, I mean, he's a process guy. And, and, and he had that, he had us standing in line.
He did.
And so we might, we might consult with him on that, too.
Two, two other quick things. One, we are getting, we are, we are getting closer to completing a, a kind of a warm-up stage for our, for our biennial Quality of Life stage. And that warm-up stage is the solicitation stage from, to solicit you for your input on questions, and question topics and subjects. So if you have any subject matters that you think we ought to add a question or some kind of inquiry in this year's survey, I need to get that from you by the end of this month, because we're getting into a timeline now where they're going to start writing the survey, and they're going to start getting it ready for mailing, and getting it ready for processing, and so on. And once we kind of get into their timeline, it's, it gets to be too late very quickly to add questions. So if you have a topic, you don't have to write the question, but if you have a subject that you think we ought to add some level of inquiry into, please let me know before the end of this month, and then Jennifer and I can talk to the consultant and figure out how we can go about getting that information. And I think that's it. I think that's all.
All right. We have a schedule of meetings for the remainder of the year, and I think that's it. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Have a great evening.[1758.15]